Okay, in connection with chapter 231 of the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice has been given to all members of the governing body, the local source and the Westfield leader. The two newspapers designated to receive such notice. This notice is also posted on the Borough Hall Bulletin Board as well as on our website. This is the May 4th, 2021 work session. Official action may be taken at this meeting. Let's start with a salute to the flag. Somebody got a flag up? Oh, there we go. Thanks, Glenn.
I want to...
...to the flag. And to the republic. To which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so let's see. Let the record reflect that we have all members of council. We have also Glenn, Jill Good, Martha, our clerk, and Joe Giannuzzi. And I understand that John Post is on via telephone. So this, did I miss anybody?
Nope.
Okay, alright, so the first...
Matt Deanna is on by telephone as well.
Oh, okay, alright. So the first topic for discussion is designate the Bonnie anticipation notes and special emergency notes as qualified tax exempt obligation. I'm assuming that's you, Jill. This is pretty standard.
Yes, we're exempt from tax because we're a municipality. So we have to guess that.
Alright, so anyone have any questions about that? Okay, so the next one is the authorization to issue estimated tax bills. I guess Jill, you're gonna tell us why we should do that?
Well, I think the problem is for probably the last 10 years, the state is very late adopting their budget. And until they adopt, the county will not release a rate. So we've been doing estimated bills for quite a while. I have the option, you know, to rescind it. But saying that last year, the tax rate wasn't even issued until July 8th or 9th. And it's hard to get the bills loaded on the system, printed, mailed out, and give the public 25 days' notice before August 1st.
And is there also gonna be a delay in us actually being able to pass the budget?
There might be a delay. The apparently every year, one-third of the budgets are reviewed by the state. And anybody who had a COVID emergency needs to be reviewed. So I did receive an email from the state that if that's the case, we can still hold the public hearing in May, but we just will not be able to adopt if our budget is not re-reviewed. And I probably won't know that until almost right before the meeting. And if, I was gonna mention this later, but since we're on the topic now, I can mention it now. If we can't pass the budget, I'll have to amend the temporary budget because we're purchasing a few items that need additional funding. So I might have to do that, I might not, depending on if we adopt the budget.
Why don't you put together a proposal as to what the temporary budget might look like?
Okay.
So that we can have some idea. Maybe, can you get it in by Friday, Joe?
Yes, I can.
So try and get it in a Friday package, okay?
Thank you, yes.
Okay, so we're going to reduce the pool. Again, anybody have any questions on issuing the estimated tax bill? We've done it in the past. It makes a lot of sense. Okay, so the next one is to reduce the pool special emergency in the amount of $2,640.56. Joe, what's that all about?
We had to pass that emergency prior to the year end. And things, you know, all the revenue wasn't 100% farmed up. We got extra bank interest. So we have to just cancel the excess of what we did not collect. And we collected 2,640.56 in the pool, more than what we originally thought we would collect.
Okay. Okay, so next one is the authorization to increase the bid and quote thresholds. Thresholds. Martha or Joe, you're gonna fill us in on that?
I think that's me again.
Okay.
So every five years, they adjust the bid threshold. It's getting adjusted from 40,000 to 44,000. And that will affect our quote threshold as well. That will go from 6,000 to 6,600. And the benefit of doing that is we'll have a higher bid threshold. So things like the potholes don't need bid and performance bonds. And we're able to get more bang for our buck. So saying that, the auditors, for the first time, are saying if you follow the higher bid threshold, you need to pass a resolution confirming that.
Okay, anyone have any questions on that? Okay, so the next one is the appointment of the part-time violations clerk, Giovanni Mack. Glenn, I'm assuming that's you. I know you sent a memo out from Cindy.
Sure. Giovanna will replace Elizabeth Gavigan, who has retired. Well, once again retired. She was retired. She came to help us after a little bit and has retired again. Giovanna comes to us, recommended. Cindy met with her. I believe the judge did also. And as a part of my purview as administrator, my recommendation is to appoint her. We need a resolution to put her on the payroll.
Anyone have any questions on that? Okay, so next one is a department refund. I'm sure this is Frank. Is Frank with us or no?
Oh, actually, it is Frank.
Yeah, I'm here. I believe this is, this is the refund for a pool membership. The gentleman paid and didn't ask his wife. And she's not comfortable going to the pool. So they want, they want to us to issue them a refund.
Okay. Okay, so...
This year or this year? I have no problems with this. I'm just curious, last year or this year?
This year.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? Okay, so the authorization to purchase the police vehicle. I know that the police committee was supposed to meet on that. And I don't think that we were able to. So maybe we need to have a quick police committee meeting and then send out a recommendation to the full council. And if anyone has any questions about it, you know, they can give me a call. Alright, so Glenn, you gotta schedule that, okay?
Good thing.
Sorry, Mayor, it was just work related, I couldn't be there.
Something happened, I couldn't either, so...
Yeah, okay.
Okay, the next one is one that I have. I asked to be put on. I noticed in other towns, especially down by my office, they have these vacant property ordinances where they require anyone that has a vacant property to register it with the town. It gives us, there's a, there's a fee for them to register it. And the fees go up progressively based upon the amount of time that it remains vacant. I think that it also gives us a little more control to know who is the actual owners of some of these vacant properties, especially these bank-owned properties that, you know, are sitting, especially with the foreclosure moratorium. They're, they're just sitting and they, they become eyesores. There's also fines if they don't register, which then we can turn around and utilize if we have to do anything to maintain the property. I know that Glenn gave us one from, I think it was Scotch Plains, Glenn? Is that the one you sent out?
Maplewood.
Oh, Maplewood, okay. And then I sent out two additional ones from Union Beach and Keansburg. So I think the key things that we need to look at, John, I guess we're gonna need you to, to put together some kind of ordinances, is number one. It looks like in the, in each of those ordinances, the, the fees to, to register the property seem to be pretty uniform, like 500 the first year, 1,500 the second. I think it goes up to 3,000 the third year. So I would imagine maybe there, there's some kind of statute that's involved in, in setting those fees. We wanna make sure that the violations fees are as high as we can get them, as long as they're not violating any state statute. And the other thing that I think is important is that we have as broad a definition of vacant or abandoned properties as we feel is enforceable. Because we wanna try and grab as many of these properties that become eyesores as quickly as, as possible. And if people don't wanna register it, then they gotta pay the price. So I'm gonna ask John, your office John, to look at those and then put together something. Let's not recreate the wheel. Let's, you know, use what we got and put something together. And if you can get it out to us, I'm not sure we'll be ready to pass the first reading in, in May. But certainly, I would think by June, work session, we'll have an ordinance that we can all look at. And we'll be able to put it on the first reading sometime in June. What?
I say I'll have that for you.
Okay, so does anybody have any questions on that? I think it's something that we need, to help with these vacant properties that are scattered around the town.
Would we have any idea, Mayor, how many properties there are?
Yes.
I don't.
Okay.
I know of a few of them, only because I've walked past them and see the grass, you know, growing. But I think maybe, Matt, at some point, you can maybe, in your travels around the town, and maybe, Joe, you can put it out to the police officers. If they see a property that looks abandoned, they can notify Glenn so we can take the appropriate action when the time comes.
Sure.
And it's gonna be easy to see, the grass is gonna be overgrown and the windows may even be boarded up, so... And we'll get a number for next meeting, Rachel, okay?
Okay, maybe this is something the new zoning officer can look at, or what he's going around to?
Great idea, Glenn.
Absolutely.
I think...
Absolutely, I agree.
Springfield has a abandoned property ordinance too. And I believe the new zoning officer, is he from Springfield?
He is the Springfield zoning officer as well.
They definitely, they definitely have that too. Maybe we should try to get that ordinance done.
I've shown the new zoning officer the three that I know of. Actually, I've shown him two of the three I know of. I stand corrected.
Two of the three abandoned houses?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so I think it's something we gotta move on. Time has come, you know? So next, we have the, we brought back the noise ordinance. I guess there was a, we looked at it sometime last year when Liquid Church started blasting their music. And I don't think we ever really acted on it. So anyone have any input as to what? I think you all got a copy of the existing ordinance. I think that the one question, at least that I saw, is specifically has to do with Liquid Church. And I think the only way to absolutely prevent them to do what they did last year is you can't have any music broadcast on Sundays before 12 o'clock. I mean, I think that's...
Well, let me give a little bit of input on this.
Sure.
The DEP has regulations regarding what municipalities can and cannot adopt by way of ordinances regulating noise. They put out a sample ordinance. And if municipalities comport or comply with that sample ordinance, then that will be considered to be automatically approved by the DEP. Our ordinance copies Westfield's and complies with the DEP's ordinance. And we were in fact approved, our ordinance was approved back in 1999. Or, so it's enforceable, et cetera. The issue becomes to the extent to which we want to vary the terms of our ordinance from the DEP sample ordinance. One, what do we want to do? And two, will it be approved by the DEP? So my suggestion would be that we first address the extent to which we want to vary our new ordinance, so to speak, from anything that's been legislated by the DEP. And once we have done that, made that judgment, then we have to then turn to the DEP and submit it for approval before we can enforce it. Which is really the bottom line.
Well, I think it is important that we do something for Sunday mornings. We can't allow people blast the music, especially on Sunday, on, on Sunday morning. So I certainly would be in favor of looking at making that change to the, to the ordinance.
And to add to that, John, I know Donna and I spoke about this with the Board of Health. We, we thought that we changed the ordinance to different hours in town. But we were looking at the decibels, the measurements. And Donna was going to take that into consideration with the Board of Health, to consider a different measurements for the decibels. If that takes into consideration, I think we should consider that as well.
Does the, does the model ordinance have decibels in it, John?
Yes.
Yes, it does.
The decibels question is a more technical kind of an issue than the hours question. And so if, if we go back, just to go back to your, your comments, if we address the hours question, the issue would be if we're going to be more stringent than the current DEP model ordinance, then in what respect are we going to be more stringent? And if that would have to do with, for example, changing the hours on Sunday from the existing level, just, or time, which for the sake of discussion, let's say is 8 o'clock, to some later time, then we should talk about that and decide if we want to proceed and get the DEP approval.
Okay, this question, I don't remember, I don't remember, was, did we actually meet with Liquid Church?
We talked to them a lot, I did.
I mean, is it worthwhile to have another meeting with them before we finalize this? And say, listen, you know, we're, we're gonna stop it. If you don't, you know, turn it down, then be more considerate of the hours instead of totally...
I think we did that and they basically kept blasting the music, right?
They did, we had police officers there numerous times.
And Bob, we, I, I believe we had a meeting where we had the noise ordinance be changed to 8 o'clock.
No, I don't know that we ever agreed on, on that time. I know we discussed it, but I don't think we ever had an agreement that...
Well, I think Martha can help us with that meeting. Because I thought we all agreed on it. Where 10 o'clock on Sunday would be fine too. But we still have to measure the decibels on the noise ordinance with the church. And that's something that we were going to discuss between the Board of Health and council.
Well, I can say, being the Board of Health Secretary, that that discussion, a discussion about changing the noise ordinance has never been on the agenda for the Board of Health.
I know it hasn't been. But that's what we were trying to get to, once we had our ordinance enhanced, to present to the Board of Health.
One little slippery slope of the decibel level. It has to be measured by someone who's certified. And we did, we did have a person come out last year. And the timeframe that they were there, they were within the bounds. And unfortunately, shortly after he left, the sound got louder.
I know also that in speaking with Matt Deanna, you know, he has our guys out working sometimes at 7:00, 7:30 in the morning because he brings them in early, especially in the summertime. So we, we, we wanna make sure that we take that also into consideration. If we change the times, it's gonna affect, you know, the, the, what the borough does also.
Also the construction workers, yeah?
Right, the construction workers too.
Well, this, this was, to my recollection, was limited to Sunday and amplified music.
Sundays, yes. This was the problem was, was on Sundays, yes. For this particular incident for Liquid Church, yes, was Sundays. Because Glenn and I, well, we're right there, so...
So I, I think one of the changes that we should be considering is moving, changing the time on Sundays to 12 o'clock. What is it now? Does anybody know? But whatever it is, I'm sure 12 o'clock is not in compliance with the...
Current.
With the DEP model ordinance.
That, that would be a correct statement.
That, that's right, Paul. Well, we would have to get approval on that change to the DEP.
And in light of what, you know, I, I think may become a, a bad side effect, I'm not sure we should change the, the start time, except possibly on Saturdays. I think during the week, we should leave it as is. But on Saturdays, I think we might wanna consider that on Saturdays going to 8 o'clock.
I should write up a sample, write a sample and then send it out for everybody to review and then we can look at it again.
Well, I think that we could just, I think it might be better if you just do a summary, John, of what the changes that we're proposing, what they are now, and what we're proposing to change them to, okay?
Okay.
If anyone else has any other changes they wanna make, take a look at the ordinance, give it to John and let him put it in his memo. So we're prepared next work session to actually discuss this and, and come to some agreement. So then John can shoot it down to the DEP to get their approval.
John, what's the lead time on DEP approval to give him the other month? That's what I'm saying, is it...
I'm not sure, Bob, I'm not sure about that.
They get, they have 45 days to do anything you want them to do. So I'm sure it's for at least 45 days.
I was gratified, I was gratified to see that the existing ordinance was submitted to the DEP by the Board of Health and approved by the DEP.
That's good.
When I saw the statutory requirement that there had to be DEP approval. If you scroll down to towns in New Jersey that have DEP approval for, for noise ordinances, there's not that many.
Wow.
So, well, they, if they adopted the current ordinance and submitted it to the DEP.
Okay, so you're gonna put together a little memo. And if anybody else has any changes they wanna propose, email John and he'll put it in the memo. And that'll, that'll put it on the board for discussion at the June work session, okay?
Well done.
Next is the proclamation for the deceased veterans. I'm assuming, Glenn, you got the resolution, I mean, the obituaries?
I did, I'll forward that to John for preparation into a resolution.
Yeah, you gotta remember, John, we're doing this in the context of them being veterans. I, I read through the obituaries and there's probably two paragraphs that only apply to their military service, all, all of which I thought were, were, were perfect for a, a resolution. And maybe, Glenn, once we do that, you can forward that down to John and Nancy and see if we can get something also from the state.
Sure.
Now, the agenda that I had, I know we've added things to, but I don't have all of those. But I know one of them is that I asked Mike Disco to take a look at two things in connection with our ordinances and to make a recommendation. The first one is the FAR on the small lots is becoming a little bit problematic for, for homeowners who are looking to expand, put additions on their property on a, on a lot that's already undersized. So Mike was gonna come up with what he thought might be more appropriate for just those lots that are, you know, in the 15,000 square foot range and the sum of which are under that. And come up with a, a new FAR that is reasonable under the circumstances. The new construction ones and the ones in the 20,000 square foot zones, I think are still appropriate. You can still build a decent sized house and, and stay within those parameters. I don't think the board has had a lot of issues with the FAR on new construction. I also think we need to make sure we define what an addition is. Because, you know, when they take down all, they leave one wall up and then they rebuild it, that to me is not considered an addition in my mind. So I also asked Mike to look at what the definition would be that that would apply for. So he's gonna give us a recommendation. And then, once he does that, we're certainly not gonna pass anything in, in May, but we can at least start the, the ball rolling. The, the other thing is, last week, Steve and I sat in on a three-lot subdivision on Summit Road, okay, which is, I wanna say it's R2, but whatever the zone is that is 15,000 square feet. And, you know, this builder came in with 15,000 square feet conforming lots. So we really didn't have much choice but to approve it. But it was clearly, they were overbuilding this property. The, the poor neighbor now is gonna have a road going down their, their side yard because the builder crammed in three conforming lots. And, and the board's hands were pretty much tied. Because I think almost everyone on the board, had they not been conforming or had they needed even one variance, we would have probably turned them, probably turned them down. I mean, and this builder, you know, he was, I don't know, I didn't, there's 51 trees on the property. He's cutting down all 51 trees. Fortunately, we, we required him to replant a number of trees. I think it came up to over 20. So they are gonna be putting the, the trees, you know, some of the trees back up. But it's clearly, I don't think the 15,000 square foot building lot size was for a three-lot subdivision crammed in like that. So I asked Mike to take a look at it. I think what we're gonna probably be proposing is on all new subdivisions, they have to comply with the 20,000 square foot lot size. Because in this case, they would have, they could have put two nice houses in there on 20,000 square foot lot. And it probably would have had little or no impact on, on the neighbors. So I just think to, to, to stop that from happening again, that we're gonna ask Mike, I'm gonna ask Mike to make a recommendation that we, for new subdivision, that the square footage should be 20,000 square feet. So once he makes that recommendation, if anybody has any questions, we can discuss them when we get those recommendations, which will hopefully be at the June work session. I don't know, Glenn, if I remember to be in 13. So I know you got a couple more, I think.
We have the shredding event, and that's on mine. I don't have a number 13 though. I have a 12. Matt can add into this, scheduled for June the 5th with council's approval. We'd like to go ahead and plan the shredding event.
The only thing I think that we, I, I saw what the county does. And they put a limit on, I think, four bags per person. And it has to be residential, you know, paper that we're gonna be shredding. We don't want some, some businesses bringing down their, their stuff to, to shred, you know, on, on our dime. So I think that, I think it was four bags. I forget the weight limit of each bag. I wanna say 100 pounds, does that sound right, Matt?
I wanna say it was more like 10 pounds.
Yeah, it's about 10, it's a shopping bag.
Okay, whatever, I, I, whatever the, whatever the restrictions at the... Okay, whatever, I, whatever the, whatever the restrictions that the county puts on, we should put the same restrictions on as well.
Okay, I'll look into that and we'll advertise that.
There's not going to be too many residents carrying a hundred pound bags.
You never know. If they're getting rid of it for free, they dug so up with a hundred pound bag. Believe me. So I think. Go ahead, Matt.
It's going to be one truck. It's a hundred and sixty dollars an hour. Once the truck is filled, the event's over, just so everyone's aware of that.
All right.
I don't know. I mean, these are big trucks, so.
When we publicize that in a little bit more detail, make sure that's in there, make sure the descriptions are in there. But I think we do need a motion to approve this because.
Oh, I'm not going to be here.
Somebody will take it down for you, Donna. Don't worry.
Listen, I paid. I had them come to the house. I paid and they shredded.
I have, I pay at my office too. But in any event, we need a motion. So somebody's got to make a motion to approve this shredding event, okay?
So moved. I approve, make a motion to approve the shredding event at the cost that Matt Deanna said.
Okay, and you need a second?
Second.
Okay, poll the council, please.
Councilwoman Andre?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Dirkis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matterjack?
Yes.
Councilwoman Messler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pacifico?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peter?
Yes.
I guess the next thing, we have one motion to approve a raffle application for the PTO of Mountainside for an on premise draw raffle. So we'll be making that motion. I don't see it on the agenda, but we are still going to have our, the public hearing on the budget on, at the regular meeting on May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Depending on what the state does, is, we'll see, you know, whether we actually approve and pass it on that night, okay? Oh, now I do see it's on here, municipal budget hearing. Uh-oh, I missed it. But I just, so we are going to have that. Renee, you want to do bills and claims?
One moment, Paul. We need the motion because they need to proceed with that raffle license. So it's not for next meeting, it's for today.
Okay, we need someone to make a motion to approve the raffle application for the PTO Mountainside for an on premise draw raffle. Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, seeing none opposed, that's moved, okay? Anything else, Martha and I?
No, that's it.
So Renee, we need to pay the bills.
Okay, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the Borough of Mountainside that the following bills of the persons named and for the amounts stated below have been duly audited and found to be correct this fourth day of May, two thousand twenty-one. The same be paid after council's review, if and when funds are available, and that the mayor, council president, administrator and treasurer hereby authorized and directed to sign delivered warrants for same. And that's for seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Okay, we got a motion to pay the bills. We have a second.
Second.
Okay, poll the council, please, Martha.
Councilwoman Andre?
Yeah.
Councilman Dirkis?
Yes.
Councilman Matterjack?
Yes.
Councilman Messler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pacifico?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peter?
Yes.
Okay, so reminders, the invocation is for you, Donna, for the next meeting. It's May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Again, there will be the municipal budget hearing. We will also have a reading, a second reading on ordinance twelve ninety-five dash two thousand twenty-one, which is an ordinance to establish the cap bank. That'll be a second reading and there will be public participation. So at this point, if anyone has any comments that they would like to make, now would be the time to do that.
Yes, Mayor. So the Deerfield School is not having a play this year because of COVID. So instead, they created a movie called Thirty Reasons Not to Be in a Play. This movie is going to be shown under the stars on the Deerfield softball fields on May fourteenth and fifteenth. That's Friday and Saturday. There'll be social distancing. When you arrive, you'll be escorted to your socially distanced spot. There'll be concessions and gates open at six thirty. The show starts at seven thirty. And to get tickets, it's deerfieldms/booktix.com. I'll spell that. D E E R F I E L D M S dot B O O K T I X dot com. So come on out and support the, the school.
If I could suggest, maybe you forward the email that you got from the school. I think we all got it, so maybe we can post that on our, on our website. Because there's a trailer, which I saw today, which was pretty good.
Yeah.
And there's a way to buy ticket stuff, so.
Also, it's Teacher Appreciation Week, so please thank a teacher for all the good work that they do always, especially this last most difficult year. Thank you.
On that note, today's International Firefighters Day. So we should thank our firefighters, especially Mountainside for its volunteer fire department.
And Mayor, one other thing I have is that this weekend's from nine to one, we have our second annual electronics recycling event that will be over by Borough Hall across from the First Aid Squad Building from nine to one. Last year, we collected over a full truckload. They had to come back the next Monday to pick up some stuff that wouldn't fit in the truck and almost thirteen thousand pounds recyclables, electronic recyclables. So if you have anything to, you know, old stereos, TVs, there's a whole list on our website. You can see different stuff that you can recycle. So cell phones, computers, iPads, et cetera. So drop them off and recycle them. So it's a free event.
I have one thing, Mayor, or two things. We did celebrate teachers and staff at Deerfield and at Beechwood on Monday. I was happy to be a part of that. So thank you, Stephen, for mentioning that. I know that was a big success. From the Mountainside Restoration Committee, for all of you who went out and purchased flowers, thank you very much. I think that was a big success as well. And this week, we're going to be starting some photo posts on our Facebook page, so please do tune in. We've got some old photos that we're going to be sharing with all of our residents. I think you'll really enjoy them.
Great.
Anything else? Just a couple of things. I forgot. We did receive our infrastructure grant from the County of Union for forty thousand dollars, which is going to be applied to the cost of repaving Garrett and Hickory, which we assumed responsibility for in exchange for the water company paving a number of other roads. I don't think there's an actual presentation, is there? Oh, it says they'll come to us and present the check at our site. So Glenn, maybe you can arrange for that to happen and we can get some publicity out of that, that we're going to be paving those roads. I also received the notice that the, the Union County Board of Commissioners is wants everyone to know that there are appointments available online. You can get them at ucnjvaccine.org. That's posted on our website page and on our Facebook page. They're also saying that there are, they are accepting walk-ups at Downs Hall at King University on May fourth, May sixth, starting at three and going till six o'clock. So I guess the one today is over, but they are taking walk-ups on May sixth from three to six. You need to bring proof of ID. You need to bring an ID and proof of your address. So I'm assuming a driver's license is going to be sufficient. I also know that Governor Murphy came out with some, lifting some limits. And I know he mentioned fireworks, but the, the way he phrased it is he wants, we can, he lifted the limits, but everybody's got to be six feet apart. So we're not sure how that's all going to work. We want to have fireworks this year. We're just not a hundred percent sure as to how we're going to handle that. We're going to take a little bit of a wait and see attitude to see if he further lifts any of those restrictions before we commit to having the fireworks. Because the last time we had, and we had between three and five thousand people. There's no way we're going to be able to maintain six feet between people if we have that many. So will we visit that in June, depending on the guidance that we get from, from our governor?
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm very sorry to interrupt, but we lost our stream. And I need to get the YouTube live stream back up. However, I want to tell you that everything has been recorded that has been said. But please just give me a moment because our stream dropped. That's another first.
Should I repeat what I said again or you already got it on tape?
I, it's, it's been recorded.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay, so just to, one other thing I wanted to mention. I wanted to thank Mountainside Beautiful for two things, actually. I know that they went out, I'm not sure what day it was, Bob. You can, you probably remember the day they went out and they basically cleaned up Route twenty-two. I understand they picked up two hundred bags, those big construction bags of garbage along Route twenty-two. And also, I saw a picture in the Mountainside View which showed that they also did some spooching up down by the Mountainside Post Office. So I want to thank them for their continued good work in beautifying Mountainside. So I guess at this point, we're going to open it up for any audience participation.
All right. The only comment that we received before was from J.D. Bryden. And that is to say happy birthday, Councilwoman Pacifico.
Thank you, J.D.
Okay, any, any other ones?
No, there is not. But please give it a second. I just had to repost that. So I give it around, our past delay was around twenty-five seconds. So I haven't had a chance to test this delay.
Back and wait.
Happy birthday, Donna.
Thank you.
We won't ask you how old you are, don't worry.
Yeah, don't even, Paul. Don't even go there.
It looks like she just turned thirty.
Yes, amazingly, and so is my son. He'll be thirty-one in two weeks.
By the way, on, on Sunday, I was in the car with my two kids and my daughter turns to my son and says, says, did you know daddy's forty years old? And I said, Fiorella, I'm not forty. I'm, oh, she says, did you know daddy turned forty? Is forty years old and he's going to die soon?
Oh, geez.
And then I said, I said, Fiorel, I'm not forty, I'm twenty-eight. No, you're not. Mommy told me. And I know, I knew that even before that.
You're on a twenty-three second delay.
We're good, Dan. Let's go.
I think exact, do we get all the proper notices out for that, Glenn?
Yes, we've been notified. We'll, Martha and I will be on, but then we'll leave the meeting so that Martha can transfer it to somebody.
Okay, all right. So whereas the Open Public Meeting Act of the State of New Jersey permits the public to be excluded from certain matters to be discussed by the governing body, whereas the mayor and council desire to discuss litigation contracts and personnel, which are matters where the exclusion of the public is permitted. And whereas public disclosure, the results of the discussion of this will be made, we made possible as soon as the matters discussed have been resolved. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the Borough of Mountainside that the forcied matter shall be discussed in closed session. And basically, it's personnel. So we need a motion to go into exec.
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay, so we're going to be in exec as soon as we can log on, okay?
Right.